Good afternoon. Welcome to the July 10, 2025, meeting of the City of Muskegon's Planning Commission. We'll get started with our agenda with a roll call, please.
Ken Johnson.
Here.
Jonathan Seifert.
Here.
Jesse Keener is excused. Tony Blake is excused. Steve Goward.
Here.
Leah Willett Leroy.
Here.
Did I say it right? Brian Masey.
Yeah, here.
Joe Montgomery Keith.
Here.
Let's see, students is excused.
Okay, and we have one member who may need to leave early, so we won't hold the guest. All right, and then we have approval of the minutes from June 12, 2025.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes. Any further discussion?
I'm not good.
Seeing none. Roll call, please. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. All approved. And so then we have, oh, took away my agenda. Hate when they do that. All right, we have a series of public hearings on the agenda today, but I do believe we have a few that we need to remove. And so staff initiated requests to remove cases ending in 29 and 31. So that would be case 2025-29 and 2025-31. Moving from the agenda. So that brings us to our, do we need to do any? First case would be case 2025-25 is the request to amend section 2331 of the zoning ordinance to allow marijuana retailers and provisioning centers with approved drive-through access to remain open for drive-through sales only between 12:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. by the Grassi Knoll. Staff report, please.
Sure. So this request came before us in April of last year. However, there was some language that didn't really work well with the ordinance. I believe also the commissioners had some issues with the 24 hours being allowed. So they are coming back here now with a new proposed ordinance that would allow, allow them, allow anybody with any marijuana retailer with an approved drive-through to be open for drive-through only from 12:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Currently, the ordinance says that all retailers must close by 12:00 a.m. So as it's written, we would keep pretty much the same language where it says provisioning centers, retailers, micro businesses, and designated consumption establishments may operate between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 12, 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. And then the additional language would be daily, however, provisioning centers and retailers with approved drive-through access may remain open for drive-through sales only between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m., provided all other applicable state, local state and safety regulations are met. Currently, drive-throughs are allowed in several of the underlying zoning districts, but we only have three of them approved right now. There could be potential for more as long as they meet those special use permit requirements. Staff really doesn't have a recommendation on one way or another. It does fit in well with the way the ordinance is written, so it would work well. We did have some concerns about, past couple of years, we've had some discussions with the applicant about camping. Looks like that kind of popped up again, although it will not be allowed during special events. But we have talked into the applicant and they have assured us that they will not be doing that and then have pulled their advertisement from social media on that. So I believe we do have the applicants here for any questions.
Okay. Does the applicant want to come forward and address the question at this time?
I'm Ben Ryder. I'm an attorney at Palmer Law. We work with the Grassi Knoll on various matters, including this zoning amendment proposal. This is Fred Seeny. He's the owner of the Grassi Knoll, along with his wife Janet. We did a previous proposal, as Mike mentioned, last April. It was for 24 hours. The language in the ordinance, proposed language in the ordinance wasn't as concise as it is now. Now, we've, instead of 24 hours, we've, we've limited it to the current ordinance of 8:00 a.m. to midnight. But for retailers that have a drive-through, approved drive-through, which there are three in the city, those retailers would be able to remain open from midnight to 2:00 a.m. drive-through only. Grassi Knoll's seen a huge demand in business from 9:00 p.m. to midnight. I can let you speak more on that. But I think some of the concerns in the last, last go around was the 24 hours, which we've limited. I know there's some safety concerns, so that's why we wanted it to be limited to drive-through only. Do at least three facilities now. So once again, kindly asking for your consideration. Once again, we're just trying to help our patrons. That helps us tonight, honestly, and helps them as well. Typically have to tell people, sorry, we're closed. And once again, it typically supports the night shift, afternoon, night shift people. Safety protocol has all been put into place. Doors are locked. Alarm systems are set. Cameras are on. Discussions with the local police department. They have no issues and they support us. Trying to do that respectfully in regards to the, that was honestly not us. We had worked with Burning Foot in the past. It's again, my full responsibility, didn't realize that we had to get permission. So my apologies for that. As to this year, we had contacted them, which we found out, and Mike was kind enough to call us and tell us about that. Asked them to post that and have contacted them and asked them to immediately take it down. It's in no intent for us to deviate from any policies or regulations, and we will not do that ever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant from the question at this time?
I'll take one. First one. I need more explanation as to why it's beneficial for you to be open from midnight till 2:00 in the morning.
It's to support our customers and to help them get action that they need. Typically, you know, there's a lot of disclaimer in regards to cannabis. Most of them are, very large portion of them are coming to get relief. So anxiety, trying to get to sleep, stress, illness, whatever it is, and that's all we're trying to do.
Do you have actual data to support that? Like, do you have an idea how many customers you're missing out on? Do people complain? Tell me more.
Sure. Well, people definitely do complain in regards to, or people are lined up at 12:00 and we have to tell them, sorry, we cannot serve you. So stand there and see how many people follow up after that. I mean, we have a cleaning crew that will stay a couple hours to clean up and they'll see cars pull up and go through the drive-through, see that we're closed, and leave. It isn't that, except we get requests from, say, why can't you stay open later?
Any other questions at this time? Otherwise, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Okay, thank you. We're going to go to the public hearing portion of this case. So we'll ask anybody in the audience who would like to join us to speak to this item to please come forward. Seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and open the phones if anybody would like to call in regarding this item. You can reach us at 231-724-6721. Give that a minute or so.
In the interim while we're waiting, I have a question for staff. Has there been any research done on, on?
We actually have a call.
Oh, okay, let's do that first.
Hello, you're with the City of Muskegon Planning Commission.
Hi there. I just wanted to make a comment on the proposed matter. My name is Angel Coon, and I'm a resident of Muskegon County, as well as have a small business down in the downtown district. I've worked with the Grassi Knoll multiple times. I've gotten to know them as people. These are good, hardworking people, just trying to bring natural medicine to our communities safely, something that's tested, that people can access it and know that it's not lazy. And not everybody works the nine to five. There are many creatives and leaders and entrepreneurs that have a very busy schedule, and it's very shameful to think that a veteran or somebody else in this community who desperately needs their medicine and might not have had the chance to get there during the day might be turned away. So I think when we have good people working hard and running to the T businesses, following the letter of the law, and they present us an opportunity to help their business thrive, I don't think we should demand evidence. We should trust the people in our community that are making this community so great. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Let us know if we have any additional callers.
No additional callers.
I just wanted to follow up then, Mike, real quick. You want to go ahead?
We can close the public hearing and move to discussion.
Okay, all right.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and supported. Make the motion. And supported.
I'll take it.
And then take your pick on support.
All right, so the public hearing's been closed, and we'll move into further discussion. Did you have additional questions?
So that we may proceed with discussion. I move the request to amend section 2331 of the zoning ordinance to allow marijuana retailers and provisioning centers with approved drive-through access to remain open for drive-through sales only between midnight, 12:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. Be recommended to city commission for approval.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported.
Okay. All right, I wanted to ask about standards. Have you looked at other communities? Do a lot of other communities have their provisioning centers open till 2:00? Is this something you see frequently?
Not frequently. I know Kalamazoo allows 24/7. They do have a couple that participate. Most of the time, you see them around 9:00 or 10:00. We have one of the later closing times that I've seen, but that does change, so I'm not aware off the top of my head of 2:00, 2:00 a.m. I did not see any of that in any of my research, but again, there are communities that do allow 24 hours.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Can you just remind everybody the current hours open for all dispensaries?
Yes, currently, you can be open from 8:00 a.m. until midnight.
Okay, and for non-dispensary drive-throughs in the city, is there any timeframe?
It's all the same now, whether you have a drive-through or not. This proposal would limit it, those two extra hours just to the drive-through.
I mean, non-dispensary businesses that have drive-throughs, any restriction on hours?
Oh, any type of business? There is no type of hour limitation on any type of other retail.
Any other discussion we wanted to?
At this time?
Everybody's just, go ahead.
Yeah, this is the third time Grassi Knoll's come before us. The first couple of times, Planning Commission didn't favor that approach for various different reasons, myself included, did not support the previous attempts. But this time, the way it's worded, the way it's presented, I do find it satisfactory. I would support this today and would support, support this at the city commission when it comes to the city commission as well, so I'll support this. And I will also add too that I like that it's part of the special use permit because in the future, when we are issuing those, right now, we only have three, but in the future, as we're issuing them, we can take into account if there are public disturbances or nuisances as to reason to revoke their permit as such. But where you're located, you're not surrounded by a residential area, you don't have, you know, people living right next to you, and the other location nearby is similar situation. There's the one on Apple, there are some residents nearby, but it's in a already commercial, heavily trafficked area where they previously had 24/7 hour operations there with Walgreens. So I don't see the three properties that could avail themselves of this, if they did, conflicting with or disrupting existing activities that are happening there. So I'll support this.
Okay. If I am not seeing any other discussion, we will go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Montgomery Keith?
No.
Jonathan Seifert? Steve Goward?
No.
Brian Masey?
No.
Leah Willett Leroy?
No.
Ken Johnson?
Yes.
All right, motion fails.
This will go to the city commission meeting on the 22nd, on July 22nd.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next case we have is 2025-26, request to amend section 2005.05 of the Form Base Code to allow churches as permitted use in civic buildings in the Form Base Code, Downtown Context Area by Century Club Development LLC. Staff report on this item?
Sure. So in our Form Base Code districts, we have several different context areas, and churches are allowed in civic buildings and all of them, except for the downtown. This request would be to allow for them in the downtown context area only in civic buildings. There are only two types of buildings allowed in the downtown context area, that's mixed-use buildings and civic buildings. Staff did some research on the building, on the history of it and how it was built, so we do believe that this would actually be considered a civic building. It was dedicated in 1889 for the Muskegon Club, and then later, the Century Club in 1901. It's historically served as a social club for business leaders and different types of residents. So it was initially built as a civic building, and we could still consider that today. It does have some limitations with retail. The developer has retail in there now. I do believe that it's been a little difficult to maintain that, so their request would be to amend this. So it would not be for any, or for just them, it would be for any civic building in the downtown context area. I believe this is our only civic-type building downtown. That doesn't mean that one could not be built, though, so.
Okay, and then do we have an applicant present? Check to address the commission.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for considering our request to have this amendment made to the Form Base Code downtown. My wife and I, just a brief history, purchased not only the Century Club, but the, at the time, was the Daniels Building and the Savings Bank Building back in 2006. Little did we know that in 2025, we'd still be the owners of those properties, although the Savings Bank was sold about 10 years. We did extensive renovation to all three buildings. The Century Club was initially renovated in 2007, and at that time, it was renovated for a retail operation. It was largely based on the strength of that lease that we had with the retailer, that we were able to get the funding that was needed to do the renovations. Unfortunately, sales were not there for the retailer, although I would suggest that there were other reasons as well, but that was largely the reason that they terminated their lease early. And they just found frankly that the building was not suitable for retail. And honestly, again, I think that was the first time that the Century Club had been used as a retail operation. Up until that time, it was largely a business club. It was a gathering place, you know, for business people and other folks in the community. When the original retailer broke the lease, we then brought in the smaller shops. Our goal all along, you know, with the modest developments that we've made, has been to bring retail and residential downtown. And so we started the Century Club shops pretty much as a retail incubator setup. We currently have about 11, you know, different businesses in there yet that operate. Some of them are, well, they're all locally owned. Some of them are satellite locations for a couple of other businesses. Most of them are independent, locally owned businesses, you know, here in Muskegon. But we find too that they have a difficult time. I mean, the fact of the matter is that the building, again, is just not ideally suited, you know, for retail. I can tell you that our sales, for instance, as we look at, at traffic, and I know that was one of the comments that staff made, and I appreciate the research that they did as well, in looking into the history of the building, the traffic, I respectfully suggested to Mike, I would disagree with staff, that, you know, eliminating the retail operation there would reduce traffic. I think perhaps just the opposite might be true. We see close to 60% of our sales happen in three months, June, July, August, and then the fourth month, again, we get a little boost again during the holiday shopping season. Proud to say, happy to say, that of the people we see there that come in this time of year, I dare say, we don't have hard data, but anecdotally, I would suggest that probably 75% to 80% of those people are from out of town. And so we're happy to be able to host them, but unfortunately, again, the traffic that we see just for a relatively short period of time in the summer, and again, maybe during the shopping season, isn't enough to support, you know, the retail businesses there. Yeah, we find and notice often, you know, that people walk by, but, you know, to look at the nine steps to get up into the main building there, even though we have handicap access in the back, just is a little daunting and intimidating, perhaps, for some people. They want to walk right through the street, which is ideally what, you know, most retail operations are set up for. So it's been difficult, frankly, to support retail at that location. As far as the civic building, yeah, I've always considered, you know, the Century Club to be, in my mind, one of the iconic historical buildings in downtown. As staff mentioned, was built in 1889, 1891 in that area. And so, yeah, give or take 135 years old, still shows nicely. But again, it was always, you know, a gathering place. It was intended, they had restaurants in there, of course, at one time, but that was the primary use, as a gathering place, as an event center, civic center, really, rather than, you know, retail operations. We've, as you might guess, at our age, we've decided it was time to sell these properties, and they've been listed for seven years now. We've had three different commercial retailers. Realtors have had opportunity to sell the building. Up until this time, in seven years, we've not even had a serious consideration from anybody, until now recently, the church has come along. And the church, by the way, has been there for the last year, bringing in people every Sunday. As we look at traffic again, and I think the pastor perhaps can speak to that a little bit better, but I know every Sunday morning, they have give or take 70 people. They've only been there a year. They've already grown considerably in this first year. I think they have plans again to continue to grow at that location. I expect that, you know, we will see them operate, you know, seven days a week there as opposed to the limited amount of time that we work, the retail operations there as well. So I, again, would expect to see traffic increase, and maybe at times too, that otherwise traffic is minimalized, perhaps downtown too, just because, I mean, and the type of operation that they have. Don't have too much more to say. I guess I will just comment yet on the civic building. I know as Mike and staff have mentioned, yeah, in their, in their minds, it is a civic building. That's always been the use, and I think as I look at the definition of what a civic building is, I think, you know, certainly the church there fits the description. One of them that's, you know, said that civic building is a means, means a building owned or leased by a public agency or nonprofit organization for the primary purpose of providing a service to the general public dedicated to arts, culture, education, recreation, and so on. And I certainly expect that that's one of the purposes that they'll fulfill there as well. So I think it certainly qualifies as a civic building. I'm not sure what other category it would fall into. I still don't see it as an office building. It's really not a restaurant at this point. It's not retail. So I think civic building is an accurate, you know, classification, and I guess the question in my mind then, or I really seems to me, what it, what it comes down to is there's two questions that, that I'm hopeful that you will answer in a positive way to. The first one is, is the Century Club building a civic, you know, property, civic building? And secondly, can we agree that a church is permissible use in this civic building in the downtown Form Base Code context? As staff mentioned, they're allowed in other civic buildings in other areas, just not in the downtown context. Those, it seems to me, are maybe the two questions that we would ask you to answer affirmatively today as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we're going to go to a public hearing. Thank you.
I wanted to.
We may have more questions for staff, but we can do.
Yeah, I wanted to ask if the church is here.
Yeah, well, so let's open it up for a public comment for the hearing, and just state your name and let us know where you're joining us from.
My name is Matt Lucanville. I'm the pastor of the church called Cornerstone PCA. As Gary said, we started about a year ago. In the original, five families that wanted to start the church, wanted to start a church that would be located in downtown Muskegon for purposes of serving and caring for the community and reaching out to the community in a lot of different ways. And so we got connected with Gary, and we have found the Century Club to be a great spot for us, and we have enjoyed meeting there. We've enjoyed the location. We've enjoyed the opportunities that is beginning to present to us and show to us, and just thinking and dreaming of if we were able to buy the building, what we might do, what that might look like. And so just being able to gather, but also, and that would, it's going to draw people in, as Gary said, we're going to meet several times throughout the week, and we'll have different people in different kind of meetings and gatherings, and we'll have our offices in there. And then we've had ideas of different ways in which we could use it throughout the week to serve the community, whether that be starting some sort of coffee shop and shared workspace that people could come and work in, or it being a spot where we could have moms and moms with kids begin to gather and have a space for them to come together. We've talked about ideas of creating tutoring opportunities, creating a bookstore, just lots of different ideas that we've begun to have, and ways to serve the city, and then also wanting to ask the city as well, what are the ways that we could serve? What are some of the needs? What are some of those things that we as a church could do to help meet some of the needs of the city? And so those are kind of the combination of why it excites us to be down here.
Thank you very much. If we have additional? If we have additional, because we're not going to go back and forth because later, if we have additional folks who would like to, yeah, sorry, forgive me, you have three minutes to provide your remarks.
Hi, my name is Maggie. I live in Muskegon. I'm actually here to speak in strong opposition to item B. Western Avenue is one of the few vibrant, workable retail corridors left in Muskegon. It is our cultural and economic heart. The city is growing in a beautiful renewal. I like to say that we're in our Phoenix era. We might not have great traffic yet, but it's coming. And I don't want us to handicap our growth before even getting started. Every inch of this district should be preserved for tax generating, community serving businesses, businesses that keep lights on, doors open, and people coming downtown. Churches don't do that. Churches don't pay taxes. They don't create foot traffic and they do not support surrounding businesses. And most are closed to the public six days a week. This isn't about personal beliefs. It's about public responsibility. City planning must prioritize the collective good, not the private interests of religious institutions that already have ample space elsewhere in the city. Let's be honest, Muskegon is not short on churches. What we're short on is thriving affordable, functional retail space, and we cannot afford to lose more of it to tax exempt uses that don't serve the economic or civic life of our downtown. There are plenty of vacant or underused properties in Muskegon that could house a church. Western Avenue should not be one of them. Civic buildings are part of government. Our government is aggressively lacking on awareness of church and state separation. Please don't contribute to that. Please note, vote no on this amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks in the audience who would like to address this item?
I'm Phil McPherson. I'm a downtown resident. I'm also in opposition of this. I also agree with Maggie that this is a non-revenue generating organization for the downtown district. I also agree there are plenty of, plenty of other building opportunities for a church to be had throughout the Muskegon County area. I see there are a lot of conflict with this particular situation and the fact that businesses downtown are going to be competing for parking spaces, they're going to be competing for spaces throughout the day. We're going to see potential conflict with our local bars and patrons of churches. I'm not opposed to faith by any means, but this is a tax-free organization. The downtown district, Western Avenue, is still trying to thrive. And if we eliminate a space for retail business, one of the only spaces downtown for our tourists to come and shop, then we're cutting off our face. I mean, we're eliminating a spot for our tourists to come, as well as for our local people to shop. I mean, look at our, look at our world that we're living in. People don't want to go to Amazon and Walmart. We want to support our local businesses. So I'm in very strong opposition of this, this line item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi there, my name is Angel Kuhn. I was the one on the phone, or you might recognize my voice. I am a mother, a veteran, and like I said, a business owner here in the downtown area. So I, of all people, I think, understand how important foot traffic is. But I would like to just review what happened earlier this week at the city meeting, city board meeting. We approved a category of funding that was meant to help our community, and that included taking thousands of dollars away, down to zero, for youth basketball and other programs in this city. And now we're going to consider taking away taxable dollars that could have solved that problem or can be there to solve the problem in the future? I, I definitely understand that foot traffic, traffic is lacking. And I live out in Holton. I'm in the county, but I live in Holton. And I had said Monday night at the meeting, if I don't leave my house by 9:00, 10:00 PM, I might as well not even come out to Muskegon because there's not anything going on on Western. And I would argue that if we instead focused on policies that we say are meant to keep our communities safe, but are not actually like solving the harm that has been caused, not addressing the harm that has been caused, and then we're going to say yes, say no to hardworking companies that have been giving to this community, and then say yes to organizations that are faith-based at a time, like Maggie said, when the line between church and state are, is getting blurred? I, as a veteran, am wondering, what is going on in this country? What did it mean, what did my PFC Webb die for? Not in battle, when he came back and was sick from the burning toxic pits that they made him stir? And did the government take care of him? No. So I am all for serving the community. I am, I deeply revere my relationship with my Creator. And I am civically engaged and ready to actually steer this country the way it goes. And Muskegon has a unique opportunity to be a clear example of what diversity coming together can look like. And so I welcome faith-based, but on Western, when you guys just limited a small business just trying to extend their drive-through by two hours? As a mom and a veteran, and as sitting on the planning commission in Holton, I understand that it's hard to maybe make decisions. But we have to be brave enough to make the ones that are going to carry through the chaos that we are currently facing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else?
Yeah.
We've got a little bit of a line going. Thank you. Your name, please.
Hello, my name is John Ramonis, and I am a downtown resident. Recently purchased a condominium not that far from downtown, which I use to great effect to browse the shops and take up the nightlife that is Muskegon, having moved from Ottawa County. I work remote. A lot of my time is spent in my house and is spent in the businesses around my house for lunch, for dinner, for the nightlife. It's, you know, it's one of those things that brought me, the revitalization of downtown, which brought me back to this community. I was born and raised here on, over in, you know, the township. And, you know, I was here when the mall was here. I was here after the mall wasn't here. And let me tell you, I didn't see any churches lining up to help rebuild downtown. I'm not against religion. My mother was a church administrator for, you know, 26 years in Grand Haven. Religion was one of the founding pieces of my upbringing. However, you can walk a block in either direction, or maybe even two blocks in either direction, and throw a stone and hit a church in downtown. So it's not like there's a lack of His Holy Presence in the greater downtown area. This area is for the nightlife. It is for the day life. It is for the businesses that support our community and have been supporting our community for the long time, through the thin, through the thick, through the thin. I respect the person who brought the issue forward. Foot traffic is not indicative of a business's progress or a business's revenue. In this internet age, people are very resourceful. They can make their product and sell product online. Just because, you know, you guys don't see people going in and out of the building does not mean that a business is not generating revenue. It is not paying its rent. And I have been a patron of many of the shops that have graced the Century Club area. And it would be a disservice to our community to allow this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Gentlemen on the back.
Yeah, thank you for your time. I just wanted to address that separation of church and state. I think what's been presented here by multiple speakers is a misinterpretation.
I'm sorry, sir, could you give us your name?
Oh, errand writings, yes. It's a lack of understanding of what that is. I believe that comes from a letter between Thomas Jefferson and maybe a Baptist preacher or something back in his day. And the preacher was concerned that the government would get into religion. He was concerned about keeping government out of religion, not religion out of government. So I think that that has been, you know, misinterpreted and it's been an inaccurate preference to that today. So just wanted to clear that up.
Could I comment? At this time, we can only take one comment per person. Do I have other folks who'd like to address the commission as of now? Okay. Sorry, do you want to address this? Please come forward.
My name is Bob Ian Solkma, and I guess before I get started here, I'm a formerly licensed social worker. I used to work over at the county mental health. So what I would say here is this city, like many in this country, has more churches than homeless shelters. Last I knew, there were two homeless shelters in the city, not very many. I went and just quickly Googled the church before I got up here. There's nothing on their website about what they do for a community. I agree with everyone that come up here and talked about the taxes and all of that. I don't want to read those things that have already been kind of mentioned, but I stand behind all of those reasons. But what I would say is also part of my degree was I studied public administration. It's really, really important for urban areas to have culture. This city, I think I just quickly Googled some statistics so anybody. 11,000 black people in the city and about 19. You come up here and you talk about a white, dominant church, not saying that they're not inviting other people, I wouldn't even say that I'm against faith or any of that. I'm also a queer and gender. When I see a church down on Western Avenue, that is not going to attract, not because I'm against faith, it's because it has been happening in this country currently and historically. That's a dangerous ground that we're on. I was just watching the news before I came in here, saying that he wanted people like me. Like me are scared right now. This is one of the last things I see. I know that with the traffic issue. What I would also say is churches aren't employers realistically. They kind of employ their own, they're very limited in staff. We need jobs here, especially for the times that we're. It includes people of color. They. It's into white folks and a number of. We listed on their thing, there's a number of churches around here that do food pantries. Again, I don't want to put them down. Those are the things that I would like to see. Also, I think it's important to remember green space and how we can create more of those. When we have buildings that are wider versus vertically and taking up spaces like that, we're not doing anything for our environment. Churches aren't doing anything for our environment. And I bring that up because it's important to remember that we have more churches than things like shelters too, right? But they're also taking up spaces like gardens, things like that. Plenty of homes and other buildings that they could. Park wouldn't create noise. Wouldn't drive people like me away. I also believe the city is in a very unique. But we're a kind of city of tourism as well. So again.
Thank you for your comment. I am not seeing any, okay. Getting ready to comment, just let me know so that I don't go to the phones and miss you.
My name is Bob Barrett. I'm a Muskegon native and a business owner. This particular church has been something that I've been involved with since the very beginning. It's been a desire of mine to have this kind of church come to Muskegon. I'd just like to say that to you. I can't address anyone, you guys. I am very sorry for any hurt that you've, anyone in the community has endured or neglect or a sense that the church is going to be hostile in any way to anyone. It's not our intention, that's not most churches' intentions. I would also say that most great cities have churches mixed in with their business spaces. You know, there's great churches on the Michigan Ave in Chicago, New York, tons of them. They're, they're replete in the community, in the downtown areas in that context. I'd also say that our church is very new. We're just about to celebrate one year of meeting, so the idea that we don't have a ton on our website, I built the website, and the content on it is very limited right now because we're so new. There's not that we don't intend to serve this community, it's just because of that. So I would ask that you vote yes to this. The building is great for what we need it for. It is not great as a retail space, as the owner has indicated. Tried to sell it for seven years. It doesn't sell. It's not great for retail. It is great for a purpose like a church, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Commissioners. Thanks for your time today. My name's Jaclyn Walker. I am an attorney and an urban planner, both. I'm currently working as an urban planner. I love Muskegon because of what it's doing and this revitalization that everybody's been talking about. What I do want to just reiterate again is that I am, as an urban planner, I understand why you did the Form Based Code the way you did. It makes a lot of sense, right? Retail in one strip. It does. It just makes sense. And I understand why everybody is excited about that. The problem is that it has failed, seven years of failing. And the building is a civic building by nature, so if we, we can be idealistic about it and say, we're going to keep doing retail here and we're going to try to keep it retail, but that just clearly has not worked. We're not talking about one month or two months or even one year or two years. And nobody's even bought the building or attempted to. So if we're going, as an advocate for city development and a huge Muskegon fan, if we're actually going to move forward, we need to do something different. And sometimes that looks scary and feels scary, especially in this climate, but foot traffic and getting people downtown, getting youth down there at odd hours to patronize the city, to be there and to fill those spaces, is actually doing what we're saying we want to do. It just doesn't look and feel like we thought it was going to. So I just want to encourage you to, maybe being brave in the situation is doing something different than just doing what we've been doing over and over again. Isn't that the definition of insanity? So I just want to put that out there again. Gary has tried to sell it for seven years. We can at least try to do something viable with the building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, I am not seeing any additional audience members. We, one round, sorry about that. And so we're going to go to the phones and see if there's anybody who would like to call in. The phone number is 231-724-6721. All right, I am not seeing anyone calling in, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, motion to close the public hearing was requested.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing. At this time, we can move to discussion. I do have a couple of questions. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose, say no. Hearing done. Good.
So I have a couple of comments. One is, I guess one's a question to Mike. Is this property a part of a special assessment district or bid or anything of that nature where it, where the property owners pay something in addition to property taxes?
It had previously been in the bid, but that has expired. I'm not aware of any.
So it's not any kind of special assessment district?
No.
Or special taxing district? Okay. And then I guess, and my comment then is, I would agree that the building is unique. I don't know if I agree that it's a civic building by nature, but it definitely is unique. And I think because of its age and because of its original configuration, it probably presents some difficulty in terms of using it for retail. And we seem to be focused on that being a difficult use, but potentially there's other uses besides retail. You know, possibility of renovation for housing or office or commercial in the structure. So I think we're talking about one thing only, and there may be there's other uses as well.
Thank you. I did have a question, we'll continue discussion, but is the intended purchase to allow the church to have entire use of the building, or would they only be operating on one floor and allow other uses to continue?
We'd have to have the applicant discuss that, but again, this is for any property in the downtown, so it wouldn't just pertain to them, it would be for any civic building.
And I just wanted to clarify whether retail would continue or with the purchase it would.
They've said that they wanted to discuss that, options, bookstores, things like that.
Right, so those would be retail run by the new owners, which would be the church versus leasing out to others, was my question.
But when you said it could be available to any other. But when you said it could be available to any other building, you're talking about a civic building.
A civic building, but any other property that happened to have a civic building, even if there's not one now, they were to build one.
So looking at it from the Form Based Code and the zoning standpoint and other buildings that could be impacted, as I'm in my mind going up and down Western Avenue, CIO Hall comes into question. That I think could arguably be a civic building. And I think there's probably other ones that from the historic nature of its use would be impacted by this too. So does that change how we look at the situation as commissioners? Because we're focusing on this one building and in the write-up, it was on this one building, but since we're looking at things from a broader point of view about the entire zoning district, what are the implications on that?
Can we pull up the current zoning district? Because this code is actually divided between downtown and Main Street. And they do not have the same allowable uses and the space is not that large. So I do think it's important to visually understand there is...
Those other places are exclusionary.
So there's different downtown context areas, one being Main Street, one being downtown. They are different. And we have different...
And I can't remember where the boundary is.
Yeah, that's why I think it's helpful for us to understand really what it applies to.
I'm going to pull that up.
And in the meantime, although there probably still going to be questions to you, I have a couple more questions. For civic... Sorry, forgive me. For churches allowed in any space, there is a parking requirement. And so I need to understand where that parking is expected to be located because it's different than the current use.
There's no parking requirements in the downtown.
Okay. Do we have any questions? While he's looking up the map.
I just want to make a few comments and maybe a question comes out of them, but these are observations. And for one thing right away, I want to say that this is not a discussion on separation of church and state. This is a conversation or discussion on approved uses by our current zoning. And that's it.
Thank you.
That's the only purview we have, is to determine what's appropriate use for, you know, by the current zoning and is there an opening for a variance? All right? And that's all. But as Brian did, I do have some questions on, you know, defining this as a civic building, though historically significant. That's because it was very exclusive operation. It was the, you know, cigar and brandy crowd, you know, back in the day. He brought this up, the CIO Hall, maybe a civic, but that's exclusionary too because you got to be fully a member, you had to be a union member. You know, it's not fitting, in my mind, the clearest definition of the examples that, you know, you've shown, whether it's the museum, existing churches, library, items like that. It does get very subjective, but that's my viewpoint.
That's a good point. The CIO usage, you know, could be claimed as a civic type of use, I suppose. Looking at the building, it does look more of a traditional type of retail building that could be used for anything, so.
Right. But it's a... With the current building, if I'm operating from our reality right now with Form Based Code, we implemented in approximately 2015, right? The Century Club was acquired and the intent was to be, you know, retail from the get-go even prior to 2015. So that's a better part of almost a quarter century, you know, and it was purposely commercial. And the Form Based Code presents no hardship in operating a commercial enterprise. And a lot of times when we're asking for variances, it's because somebody has a hardship. But whether or not an individual can sell a building or not is not a hardship, you know, imposed upon them because of the existing code.
I'm inclined to agree in that regard, that while, you know, folks have intentions, but when it comes to selling a property, that that's not necessarily the factor here. I'd also like to point out that if you see the visual on the screen here, that the red is the downtown context area and the kind of greenish is Main Street. So Main Street has similar characteristics but has more allowable uses. You'll see there's a church across from Hackley Park there on Third within that Main Street already. And so Main Street does allow for churches in civic buildings. So regardless of whether or not it is a civic building, the question is should churches be allowed in civic buildings in the downtown district? And I think that's the question that we need to...
And that's the conundrum. But currently, I don't feel that the request complies with Form Based Code. And I think we might be really getting into as far as what our obligation is when it comes to making sure that our choices aren't slipping into spot zoning or anything else, which can really cause us some legal headaches. I think we have to be mindful of that because would we then not be conforming, which we are required to, to make sure that this is matching our master plan, our Form Based Code, our land use map, so on and so forth? And also if we have to have an exercise to see what can or cannot be allowed, I know that opens up a whole another can of worms because we've, you know, just went through master plan review and whatnot. But if we're looking at these itty-bitty bits and pieces once in a while, I really think we're at risk, we're risked there. You know, it's... I think that some of this is beyond our purview and our purpose, but I'm really, really hesitant with these spot decisions. And again, this has nothing to do with church and state. It has, you know, nothing to do with picking winners and losers. It's that, you know, we're dealing with what we have. Form Based Code was very intentional and very, you know, intensive when it came to community input. And I... At this juncture, I don't think that I would support a variance.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I've got a lot of different thoughts on this. I wouldn't go so far as to say consider the spot zoning while it is... The impetus for what we're being... What's being considered is a single property. What is being requested is for a much wider area that's already zoned. So it's just allowing churches within civic buildings within the downtown context area. So in that regard, I wouldn't necessarily consider it spot zoning. That said, my preference is to keep it as is in terms of the downtown context area and churches not be included in the civic building. I'm sympathetic to both the church and its congregants as well as the property owner. Seems that this is... The activities coexist as it is. And so what's being asked here is to change the zoning to facilitate a land sale, a property sale. And while I'm certainly sympathetic to why the property owner would wish to sell it, and not only that, I very much appreciate the property owner's investment in the city of Muskegon and being a catalyst and at the forefront of downtown Muskegon's revitalization. The church is existing right now in that space. The church can continue to exist in that space. Some of the programming that the church wishes to do could be done in that space under its current zoning. The change in zoning and thus allowing this property to be owned by the church would help facilitate a land sale, but then also create that tax exemption benefit. While not in a special taxing jurisdiction, it's still within our Downtown Development Authority and would have impact on our DDA in a number of different ways. Not only from a taxing perspective, was captured and is used for DDA purposes, but also in terms of the support of commercial activities within the Downtown Development Authority. I understand the concerns with regard to traffic or business sustainability there. I understand that it may have been somewhat of a struggle. We're getting there. We're getting a new housing development right across the street and it's going to be scores of new residents living right across the street. There's still interest in finishing out the next block over, next door to Leonard, which would again provide scores more of residents to live right nearby. That could be potential clients. I don't live nearby, but I do go to the Century Club. I like the Century Club. It's a nice space. I think there may be opportunities for the city to help connect that with our chalets and see that as a potential transition space and build out the entrepreneurial ecosystem, but I digress in that regard. With regard to the zoning, I couldn't support changing this, but I think it's kind of a moot point at the same time. Because if you look at what our civic building type is, it is a small, medium, or large-sized detached structure. This is not a detached structure. Nor is the CIO building a detached structure. So even if we were to make the zoning change, it would not facilitate, based upon my reading of the plain language and our Form Based Code, it would not facilitate what you ultimately desire. So in that regard, I see this as a bit of a moot point.
Okay, thank you. I will just make sure that I have the correct... Again, I'm using my printed out copy, but there are some parking requirements in here, so I'll check the internet version. Okay, did you have any other comments? I think we've asked most of our questions. I think we've asked most of our questions. Anything else over here? No? Okay. Roll call, please.
Nope, we're in our motion.
Motion. Sorry, I'm new here.
I move that the request have been section 2005.05 of the Form Based Code to allow churches as a permitted use in civic buildings in the Form Based Code downtown context area be recommended to the City Commission for denial.
Support. Moved and supported. Roll call, please. Brian Masay?
Yes.
Leo Willett Leroy? No. Ken Johnson?
Yes.
Joe Montgomery Geese?
Yes.
Jonathan Cyper?
Yes.
And Stephen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to... Why does he do that?
And we'll go to the City Commission still.
Yes, we'll go to the City Commission on July 22nd.
And now we have case 2025-27, request for a special use permit to expand a nonconforming structure by no more than 30% at 3211 Edgewater Street.
Yes, so the house at this location is considered nonconforming. It does not meet the side setback on the west side. It looks like it's about three and a half feet setback instead of the required five, so that does make it nonconforming legally. The ordinance does allow a provision that you may increase a nonconforming structure up to 30% with the issuance of a special use permit. 30% of this building would equal 384 square feet and the addition is 350, so it does meet that requirement. Again, they're just looking to make the attic space another room and they would be adding on a dormer. We did send notice to everybody within 300 feet. We did receive an email that I passed out before the meeting. If you had a chance to read it, they're in opposition for a few reasons that they listed. Neighborhood impact, lack of clarity. They said they weren't sure what the intended use is. It's just, there's no change in use. It's going to be continued to be used as residential and they also said potential precedence. And that was from a property... It's not an adjacent prop... Not next to it, but it is separated by three houses and a street.
Okay. Do we have the applicant here with us today? If you'd like to address the commission? Thank you.
Good afternoon, folks. I'm Goodron Don and I'd make 3211 Edgewater our home. We've lived here now six years. We bought a 130-year-old bungalow and we are bringing it back to life. The first year, we did the inside, second year, the outside, and now we'd like to go with an addition upstairs. It actually will allow us to have a bedroom large enough to have a closet and a second bathroom. We don't want to infringe on our neighbors or encroach or, you know, obstruct any view, which the final design will not. That front dormer peak will be no... Not higher than the existing roof right now, so that should not be an issue for our neighbors. I just want to add that we totally love Bluffton and Muskegon. We've been here six years, like I said. And in our beautification project, we also hope that we are adding positivity to this environment, which we know Muskegon is all about. I also apologize for my phone ringing. I just got a new one. The volume's supposed to be off. Very frustrating. I apologize. Thank you for your time today.
If you'd hold just one moment, ma'am. Do any members of the commission have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do. And maybe it's Mike or the applicant. All of the... All of the new construction is going up, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nothing goes out.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to ask you...
Good point.
I want to ask, I drove by the property and it's hard to see, but it doesn't look like your addition is going to obstruct any view.
No, it won't.
There's nothing up on that hill, right?
We own that back small dune anyway, but even if someone in the back might go up higher, I don't even know if they are able to.
Yeah, it was really hard to tell because you can't really get down the drive and look either. So there's no one sitting back up on the hill?
No, there's not.
And that's your property?
Right, that's our property up over the top of that hill.
Okay, great, thank you.
What we don't have on the side, we have been in the back.
Okay.
Any other questions over here for the applicant?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so back to my agenda. It's not a hearing, it is a public hearing. Okay. As a public hearing, anybody in the audience wish to make a comment on this request? I am seeing none. Point to the phones, 231-724-6721. Thank you for the elevation, by the way. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, say no. And that's approved and open for discussion.
I move to approve the request for a special use permit to expand a nonconforming structure by no more than 30% at 3211 Edgewater Street, based on the findings of fact in the staff exercise located in the staff report, which we're about to do.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Do we need to... Do you need to ask those questions? I know you've answered it yourselves, but do you need to ask the question of us to confirm that we concur with your assessment? Yes, we do. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, so we have an exercise that we will complete.
Can we do this collectively?
So...
Yeah, so as you see on the screen...
There's a few questions that we're going to run through. I have answered them and I will just go through that again. And if you object to them, please raise your hand or speak and we will decide if we agree or not. So the standard questions for a special use permit are would the proposed expansion be considered offensive or a nuisance because of any of the following? Increased traffic, staff says no. Increased noise, staff says no. Increased vibration, staff says no. Increased light, staff says no. And does adequate water and sewer infrastructure exist or will it be constructed or service the special use or activity? And yes, it currently does exist. Is there anybody that objects?
I concur.
Seeing none. Okay, and then just to address, you know, the one complaint that we received, I do believe that the allowance already for the 30%, which we've already accounted for, the nonconforming uses really resolves that. I think that that's pretty clear and maybe they were not aware of that indication. So also, no further issues. Okay, roll call, please. Steve Gower?
Yes.
Brian Masay?
Yes.
Leo Willett Leroy?
Leo Willett Leroy.
Yes.
Ken Johnson.
Yes.
Joe Montgomery Keith.
Yes.
Jonathan Cyper.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item D has been removed. We'll move on to item E in the agenda. Oh, sorry, E has also been removed, as mentioned previously, as well as
Yes, D and E.
Uh, no, okay, so F is next. We have twenty twenty-five dash thirty, staff-initiated request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow marinas as a permitted use in Form-Based Code Lakeside Mixed Residential Districts. Staff report, please.
Uh, thank you. Um, so a few things that happened in the past year uh that has made staff kind of look into the zoning districts that are currently available for waterfront marine. Uh, we did have a gentleman last year who lives in this district in between um some of the marinas, but he has a home. There's several here that are are just homes and not marinas. Uh, oddly enough, waterfront marine does not allow for houses. Um, so that gentleman unfortunately had to seek a variance, and there was no guarantee that he would be able to rebuild. Uh, he was kind of at the whim of the ZBA. Uh, fortunately, they did approve him to rebuild the home. Unfortunately, the setbacks are extremely large. They're ten and fourteen feet on the sides. So, uh, that means a minimum of ten and a total of twenty-four between the two. Uh, oddly enough, it does allow for um hotels and lodging, just not residential. Um, so staff tried to research this and see why exactly waterfront marine does not allow for housing, even though there is houses, and why these properties with houses were zoned that way. Uh, we did find the nineteen eighty-six zoning map, which is our, kind of our standard for the older zoning maps to look back on, and and this was zoned waterfront marine at that time. Uh, we couldn't really come up with an answer, so we decided to check with the owners themselves. So we held a focus group a couple months ago and got a few of the owners around the table just to ask them, what are your plans? Are are you looking to keep this as a house? Are you looking to sell it to a marina? Are you looking to create your own marina? Uh, what would you like to do? Um, for the most part, the homes that were existing there, they did want um just to have a standard house there. They had no plans for marina. Uh, except one, there, they do want to have a marina there. Uh, as a matter of fact, they do. Um, they have a small marina, and they have an apartment, small apartment complex there, um, which is actually non-conforming. So at first, they were against, uh, they didn't want us to change their zoning, but once we got them around the table and explained um that there could be issues, they they wanted us to look into it. Uh, and we also have another applicant, I believe here, Dick Gezzi, who would like to build a multifamily house on a property that was recently demoed. However, you can't build any type of housing under the current zoning. Um, so that's something we wanted to discuss. Uh, it was another instance where this could really uh, you know, obstruct uh what people want to do with their properties moving forward. Um, Mr. Gezzi also does want to have a marina. I believe he's already working with um Eagle on that. However, his docks would only be for his residence, so that's technically not a marina. But the other property that does it has apartments, but they rent those separately, so that is a marina. So, we're kind of at a pass. What staff is proposing is we have a lakeside Form-Based Code designation called Lakeside Form-Based Code Mixed Residential that allows for housing and commercial units. It does not allow for marinas. But maybe it should. So we looked into that, and what we are recommending is that we allow for these as marinas with the caveat that it must be it must have Muskegon Lake frontage. That way, we don't get a marina that just uses it for boat storage. We do have that in the area. It is what it is now, uh, but we wanted to maybe not add to that.
Right.
So, what this would do is allow for marinas with Muskegon Lake frontage to have marinas. And then what we would like to do, uh, we did pull this next case, but um coming back next month, we would like to actually, once this is approved, come back and rezone these properties to that lake lakeside Form-Based Code Mixed Residential. This is supported by the master plan, even though it may not look very pretty on a map. We're gonna have some properties brown that say waterfront marine, and some say green. Uh, but they're both supported by the master plan and the future land use map. Future land you map, land use map describes this area as lakeshore, which is a mixture of uses on the waterfront. Uh, so that would include residential, uh, marinas and commercial. And why this would work great as well is that these new, this new lake lakeside mixed residential would also allow for other commercial uses. So we could start seeing some retail, commercial options in this area, which could make it more vibrant. So that's staff's recommendation is to um amend the ordinance to allow for marinas with um Muskegon Lake waterfront as a permitted use of principal uses of right.
Okay. Okay, and so technically, we don't have an applicant because this is a staff initiated request.
Correct.
I just wanted to ask, and I I just need a little bit of clarification, on the the marinas and slips, is that something that's determined by the, by Eagle? On the number of slips that you could actually have for boats?
That's uh, it's completely out of our hands, yeah.
Okay, I needed to know that, to make a good vote. All right.
And technically, is this a hearing? I wish it should tell me that. I know, why doesn't it say that? Okay, um, so it being a public hearing, we will allow anybody from the audience who would like to speak on this item to come forward at this time. General public hearing, if you'd like to make any type of comment?
I, Mike pretty much said, I guess, everything we're looking to do, we're gonna, we've been okayed by Eagle to put five slips in across the front, nothing
Okay.
No docks going out further. And uh so we're already planning on starting that pretty quick. We're putting the silk curtain in right now, and the turbidity curtain goes in next week, so we're gonna go ahead and get that part of it done. And then what I would like to do is put up like a eight-unit, three-story um condominium. Eight, yeah, and that's um, and hopefully with garages, and um we're hoping to be able to keep the side setbacks pretty small, if that's possible. Yeah, I don't, it pretty much covers what we're looking to do, you know, and I think it'd be a, it'll be kind of a unique development on the water, and I think it'll look kind of um resorty, you might say, so that's what we're going for that look.
Resorty, is that a new word?
What's that?
Is that a new word? Resorty?
Oh, no.
We're still just in public comment, so forgive me.
Right.
Um, thank you for your comment.
Yes.
Anybody else have a comment? From the audience?
Oh.
Hearing none, and go to the phones, two-three-one, seven-two-four, six-seven-two-one.
While we wait, I would like to, I don't know if I mentioned it, but this zoning district would allow for small multiplexes as the highest density, so that is six units. Um, we're not be able to get to the eight. Um, we have talked to him about that and his developer. Uh, but his property is large enough to split, so it's, you could potentially get that many units on two parcels.
Okay.
All right.
Um, and that's three-story, right?
And it does go up to three stories.
Okay, because I remember that piece.
We have anybody calling in on the phone? No, okay, just for the purposes of discussion, uh, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
And supported. Close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, say no. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Okay. And then would anybody like to make a motion so that we could discuss?
I move that the request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow marinas as a permitted use in Form-Based Code Lakeside Mixed Residential Districts be recommended to the City Commission for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and supported to move forward with the zoning ordinance amendment. Yes.
I just did have a little comment, looking into the future, because I'm a big-time boater, so I'm like pro marina and all that noise. We really ought to start looking at wake limits um for our lake as we develop some of that lakeshore. Um, increasing the boat traffic on it will do some damage to that precious shoreline that we have. Um, so we might want to start thinking about that in the future and looking at um wake limits. I know that a lot of the other lakes that are in the area have um limits like that, like Spring Lake, um, over twenty-seven feet, no wake, the entire lake, those kinds of things. Just to preserve what we have. I don't want to wash out your docks, right? So, yeah, save your shoreline. That's the only comment I had to say.
We don't have any particular development in front of us now, but obviously, we're thinking of the future.
No, think about it.
So, now I'm curious about that, because I did hear about the state is talking about potentially changing the law to allow more uh flexibility in terms of weight control. But do we have any purview or domain to have influence that presently?
We looked at it in there before. It's, it's not determined by the city. I, I forget what the jurisdictions.
Probably it's the, it's the county sheriff's office.
Yeah, sheriff's office, then you gotta get mine in from all the different jurisdictions, because it require the whole, like, but talk to Spring Lake, they do it. Spring Lake, Ferrisburg, Van Haven.
So, yeah, I'm just understanding the process and what what that involves.
It's, it also be, it's a safety factor, too, so that's really good thing to think about.
I, I do think it's worthwhile to review our marine ordinances and riparian rights.
Yeah, we can't um regulate the number or types of boats on Muskegon Lake because it's a federal safe harbor. Um, however, if we have opportunity to look at uh regulating wake, I think that's something that we should
It'd be good for everybody.
We also still need to, even though we can't regulate the number or types of boats on Muskegon Lake, our master land use plan does call for us to complete a carrying capacity study for Muskegon Lake, so it's something that we still uh need to pursue, just a reminder.
Yeah, yeah, more boats, the better, right? But let's just keep it safe and do it the right way.
Um, additionally, I think that um we could look at making sure that we're, whenever possible, allowing for view sheds as the shoreline continues to develop, because this area in question has lots of boats being stored, but you know, to some folks, that's, that's part of the character of the area, and so the character of the area will change considerably when it is all residential development, so just being able to see, I think, is gonna impact the neighborhoods.
I love that noise of the hollies, my name.
Don't you?
Ding ding, ding ding. I love that, okay.
Okay, so the matter at hand, though. Any other specific discussion?
None here.
Nothing here? Okay, take a roll call, then.
Ken Johnson.
Yes.
Joe Montgomery Keith.
Yes.
Jonathan Cyper.
Yes.
Steve Goward.
Yes.
Brian Mizzay.
Yes.
Leo Willett Leroy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Moving on, we've taken out thirty-one, and so that concludes our public hearings. Do we have any unfinished business?
No.
No unfinished business. Any new business? Nobody else wants to bring the business? Okay, I do, just have a question.
Well, I was gonna say, and it was just a reminder that the um
Stop.
Shoreline and Trails, Shoreline Trails and Greenway planning is still underway, and it's the project page on Connect Muskegon on our shirlandcity.com website is still active. And the survey is still online and available for people to give input through July fifteenth. So, next Tuesday, July fifteenth is the deadline
I didn't mind.
For receiving feedback.
I would also like to ask if we have, just so I didn't see one, was there a twenty-twenty-five work plan for the planning commission? It's all twenty-four in my notes. If I don't have twenty-twenty-five, could you share that? I know we're halfway through, but there's things that we want to make sure to address yet this year. Uh, I want to make sure that we're mindful of that. And then the other item is wanting to know how we can bring forward some of that conversation about um basically, you know, marine ordinances and our specific kind of waterfront capacities on the city. I want us to look at that in advance of additional requests as much as possible.
Mm-hmm, you're here.
Request that to get put onto a very recent future agenda. Go ahead.
One other comment, and I meant to share this in the previous items, but I just wanted to um applaud and thank staff for uh their intentionality in uh convening with neighbors um on a few of these different items, bringing together property owners, residents, and stakeholders to have those conversations, to help inform um what you bring forward to the planning commission and inform your own recommendations. So I just wanted to um applaud and thank you for that work.
Thank you. The focus groups have been working out just great, so everyone appreciates it.
Cool. I have a question, Ken. Yeah, I just wanted to ask, if, are there any updates on um the Sapi, Sapi property at the Winward Point?
Well, Jonathan's.
Sorry?
Yeah, uh
It's okay. We don't have to do things in order.
No, no, I just remember, go ahead.
Um, we, we have continued to work with the developer. Things are looking promising as it moves forward. There's some internal steps that are occurring, uh, but nothing necessarily really public yet. But it is moving forward, and it's looking like it's moving in the right direction.
Oh, great, super, awesome.
We should share, um, it was shared on Facebook today, uh, a visual to understand the traffic flow at Adelaide Point in Hartshorn. Um, but just to to share here and let everyone know, um, go to Facebook, go to the city's website. You can find this information, but also at home. Um, so Adelaide Point Boulevard, um, or it's just called Adelaide Boulevard, um, I think it's Adelaide, Adelaide Boulevard, yes, um, at the, we're Western, pretty much dead ends all the way down there. That's the entrance and exit for Adelaide Point and Hartshorn, uh, launch ramp and park. And the driveway east of Fricanos will remain accessible, but for trailer traffic only, and so
Exiting.
Yeah, trailer traffic exiting only, yes. Um, I was doing this, like, this way, exiting, yes, uh, so
I knew what you meant.
Coming out of the launch ramp, and so
Makes sense.
Trailer parking will be east of the launch ramp. That's trailer parking only. General parking for people who want to use the park, um, or other facilities over there is west of the launch ramp. Um, but trailer parking only east of the launch ramp, and then um exiting for trailer parking. Trailers vehicles with trailers may exit through that driveway, um, so that's to help improve traffic flow as well as safety um of the area, so just
Um, are you doing some really nice waypoint signs, so I don't pull in there with my trailer in the wrong drive and then have to back it up and really mess things up?
Yes, there's, um, so we're updating the signs on Western Avenue. There are signs on Western Avenue now that do direct people to the Adelaide Boulevard
Yeah.
um entrance, which is past that three-way stop in front of Fricanos.
Yeah.
Uh, when you come up the driveway, if you were to go up the driveway to, at Fricanos, there are do-not-enter signs, but you could always pull into the Fricanos parking lot and turn around.
Oh, good.
So that's, so you you still have the be, the ability to do that. It's that narrow area near the bike trail that that we're having kind of the congestion problem at.
Sure.
And this, this change is consistent with what the PUD approvals had originally been uh with uh Harbor West, uh, when that whole development was going through, that um driveway east of Fricanos was intended to be um, what wasn't intended to be the permanent uh access point, um, ingress and egress for Hartshorn, once those other developments occurred. Um, but we're fortunate that it's still there for exit and for people to use in that capacity, which really allows the car traffic and the trailer traffic to be separated.
Another thing about traffic sign, because I travel that way a lot, and I live, you know, over in Lakeside. Um, another traffic circle right there in front of the Shaw Walker would be the Berries, because the traffic is starting to really increase going back and forth. That's really old, sorry.
I was like, that's a new one.
Yeah. Old for me, new for you, but yeah, that would be really great, because traffic is really starting to increase there, and when we get all those folks living down in that particular area, it's gonna get a little congested, and right now, while we have space, it'd be a good time to take advantage of that.
Okay, cool.
Just throwing that out there.
Okay, uh, we do actually have a public comment period.
No, we took it up, though.
So, um, you're welcome at this point
With all our public comments.
Address us for any public comments regarding the planning commission. Seeing none, I'll go to the phones, two-three-one, seven-two-four, six-seven-two-one.
That was so weird when we get a phone call, because we never get phone calls. Nobody ever cares. It's like, wow, somebody actually cared.
Anything on the horizon? Seeing none, okay, I'm gonna close public comments, and I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Supported.
Move and support it. All in favor, say aye.
I am.
Aye.
Opposed, stay here by yourself.
I like that.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.